Let's call this meeting open at ten minutes past eight. Let's go on now to the adoption of the agenda. I move, Mr. Mayor, that the agenda be adopted as presented before us tonight. Any changes in? None? Fine, all those in favor, carried. Let's go on now to disclosures of pecuniary interests. None? No delegations, no presentations? Petitions and correspondence? 5.1 Resolution for the Champigny Township regarding the FPPA regulations, firefighters certification. I believe we've already discussed this matter beforehand. Mr. Wilson had addressed this and we were all in agreement with this. I believe we should send a letter in support of this? Yes, fine, letter in support. All those in favor, carried. Let's go on now to question period. None? That's fine. Do you want us to prepare a motion for support for the next meeting? No questions for the question period. Report from the United Counties of Prescott Russell? None? Let's go on to committee and staff reports. Retail business establishment hours of operation. André Lalonde, please. Mr. Mayor, whereas the Clarence Rockland Chamber of Commerce has requested that council amend its bylaws to allow retail businesses to remain open until 9:00 p.m. on Sundays, and whereas the general public and the business community were invited to complete an online survey in regards to the proposed retail business hours of operations in Clarence and Rockland, and whereas the Committee of the Hall has taken into consideration the results of the survey that the Committee of the Hall recommends that council adopts the new proposed bylaw which would allow retail businesses to remain open until midnight, seven days a week, and remain open on Family Day and Victoria Day, seconded by councillor Sima? Any questions? That's fine. Well, I only had a question here. When the survey was conducted, many people were not... Some people were not in favor with regard to the closing at 12:00 midnight, but others were on the other side of the fence. So why did we come up with a 12:00 midnight closing time? Well, because more than half of the survey responses states that. The survey states that 72.2% wanted business or retail businesses open until 9:00 p.m. That's why I'm ready to bring forth an amendment that the Committee of the Hall adopt that council adopts this new proposed bylaw that would allow businesses to remain open until 9:00 p.m., seven days a week, and to remain open during Family Day and during the Canada Day. Well, Walmart is open until 10:00 p.m., as well as Food Basics. Some of those businesses are still remaining open until 10:00 p.m. That's why I was questioning the reasoning behind all of this. Now, given the 12:00 midnight opening, there are some times in the year that like to promote midnight sales, so... Well, I think, Mr. Mayor, you know, when... I'm thinking that those ladies are caught working that have children at home. Most of the ladies or women are called upon to work. But you know, councillor Lalonde, there are many students that work. Well, at that time, those students go back to school the next day, you know. Well firstly, they're not only women, Mr. Mayor, but many men that do work. But unfortunately, the Family Day is called Family Day for a particular reason, you see. I'm torn. I'm... The town should not compel businesses to comply with operating hours, but can we say all of those except the Family Day? That's the only day? Well, let's not say you're open. You have the option of remaining open. That's what we're saying here. I know. Well, this is my view on things. There's one day that's dedicated to family-related activities, Family Day, so it's unfortunate that we compel businesses to remain open until midnight every day. Well, it's a bit dangerous. If we don't allow our businesses to open on Family Day, but other municipalities do allow their businesses to open on Family Day, people will, you know, patronize these businesses. You know, if we say they can or have the option to remain open, that's fine. Well, even those who remain open until midnight and see that there is no traffic at the later hours, then they'll close up. Shoppers Drug Mart is an excellent example of this. They closed up earlier after they noticed that business was not all that great after 10:00 p.m. Well, I believe that Chamber of Commerce, its intent was to extend hours of operation on Sundays only. But I'm a bit reluctant in having businesses operate until 12:00 midnight. What will happen then would be that Food Basics and Walmart, the bigger retailers, will remain open until midnight and might then hurt our smaller businesses because our smaller businesses cannot afford to remain open until 12:00 midnight. But... And let me just complete my point here, councillor Sima. I believe that my initial request was to have businesses open until 9:00 p.m. and I had no problem with that. A lot of the residents have told me I come back from Ottawa and no businesses are open until 9:00 p.m. on Sundays. Bus Pass is our prime example of that. So how about we just peg down 10:00 p.m. instead of midnight as closing time? Well, I'm not... I don't have any problems with that, Mr. Mayor. As far as I'm concerned, midnight as a potential closing time causes me a bit of difficulty. The point that I make here, Mr. Mayor, is this. If we allow businesses to remain open at 12:00 midnight, our bylaw enforcement officers will request that they remain on duty until 12:00 midnight because of problems that might occur. Well, what's happening right now? 10:00 p.m. during the week and 9:00 p.m. during Sunday? No, for the midnight madness sales money? Well, that's... You see, what we have to do is to revisit the bylaw and insert those appropriate clauses that would regulate... Black Friday? And, fine. So how about until 10:00 p.m. during the wait times and with an option of remaining open during statutory holidays? André? I was okay with a closing time of 9:00 p.m. on Sunday. Sunday is still Sunday, you know. I understand what you're saying. It should be pegged at 9:00 p.m. on Sundays. Well, how about specifying that on Sundays, our businesses shall remain until 9:00, 10:00 p.m., but save and accept on Sundays at 9:00 p.m.? So bylaws will be modified for the Mondays and the statutory holidays? Yes, I'm in agreement with that. And will insert clauses with regards to midnight madness sales back into this particular resolution that we're enacting? Yes? Now to remove the holding zone symbol and change the zoning category for lots described as being part of Lot 12 concession 3 and parts 1, 2, and 3 on Plan 50 are -10679. Councillor Zant? Yes? That the Committee of the Hall recommends that council approve bylaw 2018-32 to amend the zoning bylaw. Do you want me to read it again? Well, that's fine. Just read the top. I'm sorry, I'll keep on going. Amending then zoning bylaw number 2016-10 in order to remove the holding zone H symbol and change the zoning category for the lots described as being part of Lot 12 concession 3 and parts 1, 2, and 3 on Plan 50 are -10679 from Village Residential First Density Holding RV1-H Zone to Village Residential First Density RV1 Zone, seconded by councillor Belleguet. Any questions? All those in favor then? Thank you. Let's go on now to the next item. Request for complete reimbursement for application fee for an amendment to the zoning bylaw amendment. Can I read this one? The Committee of the Hall recommends that town council refuse the request for reimbursement for fees incurred to modify zoning bylaw on approval of an implementation plan for an amount of $4,790 made by Mrs. Lissomur, Mr. Sylvain Druin, and Mrs. Nertedy Druin, seconded by councillor Belleguet. Questions? Yes, Mr. Mayor. You see, from what I was told, during that time, they received permission to set up a camping business, to operate a camping business. It was given to them by the previous Clarence Rockland municipal. There was no existing regulation that would control that zone. Well, you see, there were some zoning bylaws that were implemented since then, but the costs that reflects this, reflects basically the time that our town employees have spent dealing with this file, even then they spent a bit more time than what is reflected here, but still reflects the time and the costs put into this. You know, when we're publishing the zoning bylaw, proposed changes that are proposed to the community at large, to the community at large, then the community at large has the right to revise what is proposed and citizens have so much time to object. Well, you see, they had no change. They had to... At that time, they had no choice. They had to close up the sand quarries, things like that. They had to take measures, so they had no choice but to do this. Any other questions? All those in favor then? Carried then, thank you. Multi-year accessibility plan? Well, I don't know if this was implemented. Well, we approved the fact that we refused this request for reimbursement. Fine, fine, fine. Okay, we were finished with this previous item. So are you in favor of refusing the reimbursement? Are you in favor of the resolution that states that we will refuse reimbursement? Who's in favor? Fine then. I apologize, Mr. Mayor. I wasn't sure. Some councillors were looking at themselves and wondered if we voted on this. Let's go on now to the next item. Councillor Lalonde? The Committee of the Hall, Mr. Mayor, recommends that council adopts a 2018-2022 accessibility plan and policy number ADM 2018-08 being an updated accessible customer service policy, seconded by councillor Sima. I'm kind of concerned about this one here because it might cost us a heck of an amount of money. Well, we still have responsibility to push this through because the province compels us to adhere to its new accessibility requirements. You know, if somebody shows up in a wheelchair where, you know, we have to comply with his or her needs, well, that's fine. You see, that's why our client services is located on the first floor. I note that we allow the presence of animals. I don't think, you know, or animals that are designated as assistance or personal assistance animals. I don't think that anyone is going to go in there with a cat, however. Well, one could, but... Okay, all those in favor, folks? All those in favor? No, no, I mean, Mr. Mayor, it does state... Well, the term animal is stated, so anyone could come in with anything. No, no, they have to be accredited as a service animal. Mrs. Willeth? Well, you need to obtain a permit, Mr. Mayor, because we're not stating it in here, Mr. Mayor. Well, that's a good point. We're just stating animals. If a personal assistance animal is used, it is excluded by the city's bylaw. I just want to make sure that somebody comes, you know, shows up with a cat and says, "Hey, this is my personal assistance animal." But, look, let's not print this in the local newspaper. This is just a question I had. You know, we have enough cats roaming around town hall? Yes, along with turtles and everything else, fine. Let's go on now to the sale of the Lescalle Badminton Club. Fine. The Committee of the Hall recommends that council accepts the request from the Lescalle Badminton Club to be recognized as a nonprofit organization in order to add them to the list of nonprofit organizations in the community hall rental policy as recommended. Seconded by councillor Sima? All those in favor? I'd like to determine... Monsieur Boucher, what does this entail? There are no budgetary impacts for the city, but because they are recognized as a community-based organization, they can make use of gymnasium facilities from other schools. We have a French Catholic school. However, they want to make use of schools that we don't have any agreement with and if they are recorded, recognized as a community-based organization, they can be granted access to this gym. This incurs... We don't incur any costs for this, do we? No. Any questions? All those in favor then? Carried. Let's go on now to the limit of the annual debt paydown. Councillor Lalonde? I move that report number FIN 2017-011 with regard to the annual debt reimbursement limit be received as information, seconded by councillor Belleguet. Any questions? Councillor Lalonde? Mr. Denoyier, this looks a lot like the spreadsheet that appears in Appendix A that we prepared with regards to the 2018 budget. Now, I don't have access to the 2018 budget figures, but are we dealing with exactly the same figures or have these amounts changed since then? I do understand that we haven't issued any additional debt for 2018. That's why we're at that rate right now. But we know that there are some projects that will impact that particular percentage that's levied right now. So those five, 10, 15-year projections with regard to issuance of additional debt, has it changed? There is nothing that has changed. So the forecast for the next five years would call upon us to develop what we have right now from 7.55 to 15. something. That's right. For a total of... Because I'd like to deal with this because there's a lot of discussion with regard to what's being had on social media. Councillor... Mrs. Collier and I had discussed this. I'd like us to discuss for about two minutes in front of everyone what our present debt is, councillor. Mr. Denoyier, isn't it 29 million? Well, this figure is a projection at the end of 2018. The actual debt, as it stands as of the 31st of December 2017, And what's the projected debt? 29 million. So not 60 million then, that's fine. There was some nasty rumors being bantered about, so... Thank you very much for clearing that up. Page 71. I apologize, I showed up at your office and I came up with what I needed document-wise later on, but it states annual repayment limit 2016-2018. The first paragraph states that $2,734,897 payments in 2018. Now, the report that I have before me that was published in 2017 reveals 500 and some odd thousand dollars worth of difference. I believe that the report that you're referring to deals with the 2017 budget figures. Now, this was a forecast. Since then, there have been some changes implemented. We've adopted the 2018 budget and the budgetary forecast. That's why there's a discrepancy between the two figures. So there's a 504,000 dollar difference then between one projection and the other, or one set of figures and the other. That's right, exactly. Councillor Belleguet? Well, Mr. Mayor, it's nice to see the debt payment ratio has decreased as compared to 2017, but the report clearly states that this debt ratio should increase. We have 29 million dollars, as you stated, this year, debt-wise, and it should increase by another 20 million next year with regards to the fire station projects that need to be implemented and water treatment plant. And we should wind up with 53 million dollars worth of debts down the line, so that your debt payment ratio should be increased by some 2.5 million dollars this time by close to the 25% limit that is the maximum cap that is imposed upon us by the province. It seems that we're not doing this on purpose, of course, but we're heading towards this 25% cap and I can't understand why we're doing so. You know, when you wind up paying 15 or 20% out of our budget to service the debt, where are we going to come up with the additional money we need? It's going to have to come out of the budget. Do you have an idea as to where we're going to take this? Mr. Keogh? Mr. Mayor, as you stated, town council decides upon the amount of debt that the city of Clarence and Rockland will contract, along with, of course, your employees' suggestions. Now, future increases, as was borne out in the 2018 budget, will bring about impact, an important impact on the taxpayers' contribution. But of course, we need additional fire stations and we need to make investments that are important to secure the future of our city of Clarence and Rockland. The amount that the province gives us, this 25% that the province gives us, is a standardized amount and we can't go over and above that particular amount or percentage. We can go under the... We can operate underneath that bar, if you wish, but given our five-year plan that we've implemented, we'll start off from 7% right up to about 14%. So much lower really than the level imposed upon us by the province, to it 25%. We're done even close to that limit, given the budget that the council, budgetary figures, and the budget and its figures that has been approved. Well, 25% again is a maximum cup. Queen's Park can push it up to that percentage. And would you do it if the need arises? If the maximum that Queen's Park says is that you could be at, well, doesn't mean that it's okay to be up there. Now, if we hover towards a 14% ratio with regards to debt servicing and debt servicing in another five years, that's another type of money. That's money that we have to take out from other budgetary envelope items. Mr. Mayor, we went through the budget. There are different sources that are paying to support that level of debt. So there's the tax base. There are water and sewer rates that are going to support it, as well as development charges that are going to be paid by new home and commercial buildings that will also support debt that's related to development charges. So there are different sources of financing for that. Now, the guideline of 24% from the province is a guideline. There are... Well, look, we're never in this council's time, or even in the future. We're not going to be near that guideline. But there are other municipalities in Ontario that have gone above that guideline, and not that Clarence Rockland would. But I just want to clarify the point that the councillor made. Councillor Zant? Mr. Mayor, I would ask Monsieur Belleguet this. I'm also concerned by the debt level. But at a certain point of time, you know, when the city of Clarence and Rockland's growth rate flatlines, we're called upon to continue to invest in ensuring the future of the city of Clarence and Rockland by stating that we need to build new fire stations. The existing fire stations have asbestos and firefighters can't go through the fire stations without going by the trucks. And if our water treatment plan needs to be revamped, then we need to do so. Now is the time to invest in those things. It stands to reason that we'll never go over and above the 25% cap, but now's the time to invest. So that once these services have been well-established, when they'll ensconced, the municipality will be okay with it. We'll always have this overlap with debt over top and all of a sudden it'll go down because population will go up to take advantage in what we've just invested in. That's the difference that I see. I'm worried that we're going too high, but I believe that... Correct me if I'm wrong. The more people that they move to the city, the more it grows, the more that 20 or 25% technically, this borrowing power goes up. Obviously, we're not trying to attain that, but we have to invest in services like sewer, water, fire stations. Those are basic things that I think that we need and I think that once that we have that, honestly, pending a natural disaster of which then the province will kick in, but I don't foresee... And correct me if I'm wrong, Mrs. Collier, any major multimillion-dollar investments in the community, especially that would go to debt. So we're going to pay for it now? Fine. The population will go up and we'll take care of everything else afterwards. Let's not forget also, we have surprises in all of this. We've, you know, modified or changed or replaced three to four or five bridges in the past five years. I mean, with regards to Culver's, the Butler Road, Culver also has been replaced. I know what you're getting at though. Well, if you don't have enough money in the budget to cover infrastructure, then we have to borrow 3 million dollars just to perform regular infrastructure work. If you look at three levels of government, if there was actual enough money to go around, the federal and province would not be in billions of dollars of debt and we wouldn't be in millions of dollars in debt. There's just no men... Not enough money to go around to fund all of this. Either in a couple of years, we'll have to cut services drastically or raise taxes drastically. Mr. Keogh? Mr. Denoyier clarified something to me. The amount of debt that's increasing in the next five years on the tax-supported side, the amount that's paid by taxpayers is going from 21 million to 24 million dollars. Not significant. The bigger increases are on projects that are growth projects. So the fire stations, a lot of the new fire stations are needed as a result of growth that we've identified in our development charges. So our development charges will be paying a good portion of the amounts for those projects. So both of those development charges, as I mentioned before, the water and sewer fund are also used to pay for some of those projects. So on the tax side, there will be some pressure, but it is not. The majority of the pressure, well, will be on development charges. But we have about 4 to 5 million dollars in the bank and we are generating each year about 2 million, 1 to 2 million dollars in additional development charges. So again, those revenues that we get from development charges will go towards paying off those debts that are associated with charge-eligible projects. Let's not forget also that our fire stations cost us 10 million dollars part of that. The ambulance station that is, you know, amalgamated to that will be paid by the United Counties of Prescott and Russell. But that's on a long-term payment schedule, right? Well, 25 years, I believe. 20 years? No, 20 years. Mr. Keogh brings up a very important point and that's where therein lies our challenge, dealing with development charges because we'll deal with this at the next point we're called upon to deal with in tonight's agenda. And this is our Achilles heel, in my view, in any event. That is, that we don't meet those targets that we've imposed upon ourselves with regards to development fees. Well, we can deal with that later on. But that makes it so that our total debt... Well, that's what the... Wherein lies the danger? The tax-related increase we can control, but it's more difficult for us to exercise control on any increases with regards to other things. Any other questions? Fine, all those in favor then? Statement of development charges 2017? Go ahead. Whereas the treasurer of the municipality must hand over each and every year to the council financial statements with regards to development charges income that the Committee of the Hall recommends that town council accept the statement of reserve funds with regards to development charges for the year 2017, seconded by councillor... to development charges for the year 2017, seconded by councillor Bellincket. Any questions then? Go ahead then. Yes, I'll go on with the point I wanted to make, Mr. Mayor. Now, if memory serves me right, last year, we dealt with the growth forecast that was discussed at council, and we looked at 175 annual residential units to be built to be able to finance our development charges. And that's the amount that was put in at implementation project that we implemented when we started up in 2015. So if we take a look at the actual data, you have no questions here. So 2014, 15, 16, and 17. The only year that we came close to meet our 175 commitment was in 2017. The other years, 128, 100, and 137. The other years. Now, for each unit, we lose out on $15,000. We know, Mr. Lallonde, that there are other developments that are in the works very soon. Yeah, but if we take a look at our residential units, and that's where we generate the most development charges income from this, I didn't make the complete tabulation, but Mr. Dinwiddie might have done so. As of 2015, we're 75 units short. Last year, we fell short by about nine. How about Brigid and Stage Five could increase this? Yes, but often when we're pinpointing our development charges, we're looking over this, we're spreading over this at 10 years. If you're saying $15,000 per building times 100, it comes up, it amounts to $1,005,000. Even with 100 units, we come up with a $1.5 million amount. Yes, Mr. Mayor, but all projects that fall within development charges, the development charges section, calls upon us to ensure 175 units being built per year. Mr. Keogh? Mr. Mayor, as council has suggested, now, the growth report is based on a 10-year average. Now, based on the amount of units that are in the system, we are very confident that the amount of 175 would be a good average and is a good basis to set our due development charge on. The council brings up the point that our previous studies spoke about 175 units. We did not meet those units. Yes, there will be some effect against the development charges, which will be picked up in the next review, which will be coming up before council in 2019, 2020. Well, because we had a huge growth, if I remember that number's correct, we had around 2012, 2011, something like 113 or 213, in any event. So we had huge growth for those years, but now more and more, we're moving forward, and still our biggest hurdle will always be that highway. So as we move forward, the likelihood of attaining 175 annually in a development charge for budgetary purposes is less and less likely because of the road situation. So I think that we need, that to say to Charles' point, is that we have to be careful about what we choose to develop. Mario is absolutely right in saying, in saying that we need to create development and try to motivate people to live here, but not wind up in a situation where we're going to create things or projects and not be able to pay for them with perceived development charges, because we might be playing too much of a catch-up game at that time. Mr. Keogh? Mr. Mayor? Councillor brings up a fair amount of good points. I believe you're in the process right now of hiring a company to look into our development charges for 2019 and 2020. And so this company, well, will, you know, call up a meeting between those representatives of that particular company with town council, and we'll come up with a report. Now, we'll look into this matter with them and take a look at the growth report that was approved by council, and they'll give us some advice as to whether the 175 unit per year amount is realistic or not. If it's not realistic, we can modify that amount, and the consultant will appear before council to explain why we should remain at that level or modify the imposed level right now. But this councillor has brought a very valid point. It's going to have a major impact. This is going to have a major impact on development fees. Any other questions? I just want to determine if Mr. Lallonde wishes to increase that amount? You don't think that the percentage is high enough? No, what I'm stating, Mario, is that we have to be very wary about what's going to come out of the next study to be able to make sure that what was proposed during the last study commission, study commission can be implemented now, because the development fees have specific conditions attached to them. We have to be concerned as to what is included in the new study and revise what was included in the older study. If I look at the figures here, I can't see how we can continue doing what we've been doing for the past few years. We'll incur more debt as the years go by. You're right. With the increase of the interest rate right now and the down payment that is now pegged at 20%, not everyone will be able to honor those conditions. Well, market conditions have been, have modified. I'm sure we're not the, there's a major change also in Toronto, even here in Clarence and Rockland. There was a real estate agent that I knew, and as of March, you know, five potential buyers' offers fell through because they couldn't get financed. All right, all those in favor then? Carry. Let's go on now to the next item. Councillor Levaire? Yes. It resolved that the committee of the hall recommends that council approves a bylaw to authorize the mayor and the city clerk to sign a contract with Arncoke Construction Excavation Division of 1351150, Ontario Inc., for the replacement of culvert at the intersection of Butler and Legorose in the amount of $857,142.75, excluding HST. And be it resolved that the committee of the hall recommends that council authorize the infrastructure and planning department to manage a contingency of 10% of the project cost for an amount of $125,000, excluding HST. Seconded by councillor Sima, questions? Councillor Levaire? Yes. If we take a look at the Arncoke project, $857,000, then we had a budget estimated at $854,000, oh, I'm sorry, $1,854,000. That would have been great, councillor Levaire, if we would not have only had an estimate of $854,000. Now, with expenditures and so on and so forth, and contingency fees, the total is pegged right now at $1,034,153. So we have a balance of 179 that would offset expenditures incurred by, additional expenditures incurred by our daycare system. We always come up with money, once in a while. These are only debts you're referring to right now, from an appropriational standpoint. If we've already approved $1.25 million in the budget, maybe I've forgotten this, but why should it come up again? It's already in the envelope. You have a bylaw stating that all tenders over and above $50,000 have to be approved by council, even if it's in the budget. Yes, the staff has requested something different, but council has decided to set up this particular amount. $200,000 less of debt financing to get involved in them, that's fine. We won't borrow any money that's needed. That's less money they were called upon to borrow. And when the project is overdone with, Mr. Mayor, we'll have a budget of $2 million and expenditures of $2 million, as Michel has, it won't endet us any further. This is a capital expenditure project. Yes, I'm just making the point that we always come up with money. My, my, but you're optimistic tonight, councillor Bellincket. I told you, Charles, that this is $200,000 less that we have to pay for. All those in favor then? Official plan amendment with regards to the Brigid subdivision. Let's go on now. Councillor Zant, let me find this here. Committee of the Hall recommend that we adopt the draft plan of the Brigid subdivision with conditions, and that the committee of the hall recommend that council adopt a bylaw 2018-27, being a bylaw to amend the official plan with regards to the urban zone of the city of Clarence and Rockland with the purpose of modifying the designation of the land known as parts of Lot 27, 28, 29, concession number one, and part of Lot D, concession aid from residential to high, to top density, from residential to top density, which is the same thing, right? Residential to average density and residential at high density. Hold on a minute. And that the committee of the hall recommend to council that it adopt a bylaw 2018-28, being a bylaw to amend zoning bylaw 2016-10, with the purpose of modifying the zoning category, the property from urban density one zone, R1H, to residential zone urban first density, special, R1SH, urban residential second density, R2H, third residence deferred, R3H, and park zone and green spaces, as referred. Even if I am part of the committee, I have difficulty in understanding what we're approving tonight. Doesn't make sense. Any questions? Fine. Well, there is a mistake here, because we're stating the same thing twice, Mr. Mayor. It states the same thing, residential, three to residential three again, second paragraph, residential low density, residential to residential high density. Says the same thing, basically. At the end of the second paragraph, there's low density, comma, to medium density. But the first line, Mrs. Widdit, residential high density to residential low density. No, it should state residential medium density. That's right, we're defining three different categories. Well, that's fine. If it's fine with you, it's fine with me. All those in favor then? Carry then. Thank you. Redevelopment project, the Jean-Marc Lallonde Arena. Mr. Lallonde? That the committee of the hall, Mr. Mayor, recommends that municipal council approves the Jean-Marc Lallonde reorganization concept plan as presented in report LOI, or 12013-04-03, and that the committee of the hall recommends that municipal council mandates the community services to proceed with conception of the plans and specifications for the Jean-Marc Lallonde reorganization project as per the concept plan presented in the report entitled LO12018-04-03, as recommended, seconded by Mr. André Lallonde. Any questions, councillor Zant? Are we going to change the name of this building to rather sports complex rather than an arena, because it's not an arena right now? Well, this is a request on behalf of council, because it's not considered as an arena anymore. I don't mind keeping the Jean-Marc Lallonde moniker, but, well, at present, even though it doesn't serve an arena-type purpose, because it's been known as such since 2011, I know, I've taken a look at the plan, I have no problem with it, but I think it's unfortunate to reduce the cement surface, because there are a lot of folks playing sports there, the air cadets, for example. Well, they'll be content with the surface offered them at this point in time. We're confident that there's sufficient space available for services that are offered at present. Even then, they're playing pickleball, and they're not making use of full capacity, of the full capacity of services offered. And the seating will remain there with regards to cater to the needs of the physical and community services needs. Now, the seating will remain to cater to the needs of our local population. Now, those residents whose property abuts this area, have they been advised that trucks go in there and generate a bit more noise? Well, we don't have heavy trucks, but small, light trucks right now. Now, the transfer garage, or the garage used for the transfer to Public Works, is made use of for equipment that services sidewalks. We're talking about minor pieces of equipment that usually was warehoused as a bowling room beforehand. I think that the residents should be advised, the four to five residents that are close to, whose yards back, whose backyards are abutting, this area, should be advised that this garage will have ancillary use, will be used for ancillary purposes. It's, I think it's just cursey to advise them. Yes, this can be done, this can be done. That's going to give Mr. Jemévile something to do, at least, to while away the time. Uh-oh. Well, thank you. Councillor Lallonde? Mr. Mayor, I'm completely, completely opposed to this. I attended this venue here tonight. The skating rink was occupied by six pickleball courts. They play there three times a week. There are 60 players. That bit of information comes from one of your employees. There's ball hockey being played. The high school, it makes use of these facilities to the tune of about 340 hours per year, more or less, and then, where were we holding our activities during the 1st of July activities roster? There. And Family Day activities were warehoused by this complex. Where in the center of Rockland can people meet, except this? Bourgette has a central meeting point, Hammond has a central meeting point, Bourgette a little bit outside the downtown car, but we don't have absolutely nothing left from a community center standpoint. If you're telling me the Knights of Columbus room, I'm pretty much aware of what's going on with regard to this. So, Mr. Lallonde, have you called for the statistics with regard to the rental of the community hall at the arena, the Paul Guy Lallonde Arena? How much has it been rented for during the course of a year? I was surprised to learn as to the usage on a weekly basis. The employees gave me the weekly usage schedule. Now, on that day where we'll close up a room in Rockland, we won't wind up with additional rooms, or there are many other meeting rooms. The River Rock, Knights of Columbus. Well, the building was put up for sale at a certain point in time. Well, no. Look, this situation is over and done with. We haven't recommended, we're not recommending selling it off now. I'm opposed to this measure, and the arena room located at the second floor might be modified, that might be modified a tad bit. We had an opportunity to have an elevator there, but we didn't take the money to install it. But that has nothing to do with this particular board here, this particular council. We'll address it. We're just called upon to vote upon the plan right now as it stands, but I can understand what councillor Lallonde is getting at, and one can understand that readily. Look, we have to take this in consideration, the matter as a whole now. We're reducing this by one building that'll be used by many users. So we'll be called upon to maintain only one building, and we'll sell off another building to put in funds generated by the sale to revamp the Jean-Marc Lallonde arena installation. So instead of reduce, so we'll be reducing the debt, and we'll be reducing operational costs with regard to operating operating another venue right now, which is outdated. At present, we're called upon to modify the fire lime system. We have to repair the roof that is leaking on a few areas. So we have to come up with changes to the next budget if we don't go forward, changing the arena's intent and purpose. I oppose this. This is the only building. I take a look at everything that we have at present. In the United States and even in Canada, they were having... they were hosting outdoor activities and they bring them all inside. There's an arena here at other venues, there are arenas at other venues that is so badly placed that you need to bus people in to make use of that venue. Mr. Lalonde, I'm not in agreement that some venues, and that particular venue that you're alluding to is ill-advised or the placement. Yes, your brother was seated at that council and maybe I would have pinpointed that area. And when they built the Canadian Tire at the other end, they wanted to move this also. But that's just an example. Yes, Councilor Lalonde, Mr. Boucher, you consulted the users during drafting your plan at that time to this effect, and I assume that you received comments left and right from members or from school authorities, from air cadets, organization or pickleball players. I assume that you incorporated those comments in your conceptual plan. Yes, we took into consideration what they may use of. And let's not forget that this matter has been on the bag burner since 2011. We haven't put any money in this building for the past seven years. And when you're not investing in an infrastructure for seven years, it deteriorates. If we don't proceed to those chain, needed changes, we'll have to invest in this building one way or another, even if we keep the mission of this building that Mr. Lalonde proposed that we keep as it stands at present. I forecast a more difficult future with regard to maintenance of our buildings at present. It might be reasonable, as things stand right now, to make use of facilities of one building at its maximum and enter into partnership agreements that will generate additional revenues. For example, a school board wants to enter into a long-term agreement with us. So if we put in the equipment needed and bring up the building specs up to code specifications, then we'll enter into a greater number of partnerships because the building as it stands right now costs us maybe $100,000 per year. Let's put up approximately $120,000 worth of deficit financing per year so we don't make use, full capacity of this building. Upon selling our Chamberlain Street property, that might give an opportunity for an additional business to open up shop there. So I think I'm in favor of this project. Of course, I assume that you've contacted fully with the current users to obtain their idea as to this. I have no problem with the concept plan as put forward right now. Councilor Lalonde, let me tell you, Mr. Mayor, that the previous council would have received offers that would have generated an amount, additional amount per year. I'm one of those that submitted a proposal. I was giving them $5,000 a year and I paid all expenditures. They were saving $150,000 at that time. The only thing I wasn't required to pay were those capital expenditure works. Of course, well, I don't want to comment that offer. That's over and done with. And then, there's a women's hockey league that wanted to rent this particular premise. Look, we have enough sufficient space to accommodate ice rink needs right now with regards to hockey. Now, your resolution calls for all of those five items. I wasn't clear as to what you wanted, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, or 1, 2, and then 4. No, it's the whole project, 1 through 5. That was one of my questions. That's fine. Now, the square footage that we're called upon to work with right now with regards to the garage service enchante. You know, the square footage that they make use of at present, well, approximately 2,400 square feet if I'm not mistaken. Now, that's comparable, is it? Well, it's going to be... we're dealing with wider space right now because there's a lot of equipment parked outside of the building itself. Now, if we don't take those needs into account, eventually we'll be extending this garage. It's going to cost us even more and we'll be applying more budgetary pressure on the services offered. Now, presently, the roof leaks, does it not, at the Jean-Marc Lalonde Arena? Yes, it does, it does. I'm sorry. So I made allusion to a help center, but it's an arena and I apologize. Now, the parking that we'll be making use of, how much will be... will we be reducing the parking facilities by? We... well, this is a concept plan. We don't... we haven't pinpointed that yet, but it's a small part. And the arena parking facilities is ample right now to meet our requests. How about the dome? Will it be transferred? The dome will be sold along with the building itself. Any questions? All those in favor then? You're carried, thank you. I'm sure this will come up again at the next meeting. All right, that's fine. Let's go on now to signature of an agreement, Clarence Creek Arena Community Hall renovation. Councilor Lalonde, go ahead. Absolutely, Mr. Mayor. The Committee of the Hall recommends that municipal council approves the mayor to give a contract for the renovation of the Clarence Creek project as recommended. Seconded by Councilor Sima, questions? Just to comment here, Mr. Mayor, just to indicate to members of council that myself, Mr. Jumayville, have occasion, had occasion to meet with other parish-based associations within Clarence and Rockland. Most of them are users of this particular facility and the plan that we submitted, given the interior decorator's recommendations, generated a lot of positive reaction. People are looking forward to renovations being implemented. So people have requested a few minor modifications, nothing major, and it was truly a good idea, stemming from Mr. Boucher. Consult association-related or association people. Those washroom facilities that you're proposing will certainly be needed. Yes, that's fine. Any questions then for directors? Councilor Levaire? Well, not a question per se, but there's a Clarence and Rockland resident that approached me. He owns a property on Joenice Road and there's a farm, a new farm development act, I believe, or farm, I'm sorry, that compel farmers to loan land, 100 acres, that do not have a civic address on 100 acres because there's no house on it. All right? So if there's an accident, for example, and they call 911, they do not have a civic address to go to. So that means, especially with those side roads. So Emily Project, see what happened there was that a little girl got hit by a tractor and the emergency services couldn't locate that place because there was no civic address on that block because it was 100 acre stretch. The same thing happened on a farm here in Joenice, on Joenice Road. This gentleman had a heart attack. His son was there. So when they phoned up 911, they could not indicate where he was, but if they had a civic number there and an entrance at least, they could say, you know, instead of saying between address such and such and address such and such, well, we want to at least have a specific, have a specific address to be on that lot. Now, nobody has a civic address if there's no house on the lot, you know, 100 acres or more. And there's, there are quite a few farms that have that type of acreage in that area You can tap into the information contained in the Emily Project. I believe that counties are involved in that. You can phone up Michel Calletti, the ambulance services or emergency services, they can give you a bit more information as to where to obtain information. Any other questions, Councilor Lalonde? Sir Leonard? When are we going to deal with this situation? We haven't dealt with this in quite a while, situation with regards to La Caste Road. I thought we were supposed to get involved in repairing certain items during the winter time, but we didn't do so because of migratory birds, some issues with regards to migratory roads that delayed any action as to this. Some people asked me this to bring to council. Mr. Mayor, there was a matter of purchasing property there to be able to perform the work needed. This was done. The owner was quite reasonable when requesting a price for the purchase of this property. Yes, I agree with you. And then, we're in the process right now of tendering out for the work that needs to be done there and things are going to occur quite quickly. once the thaw settles in, basically, I expect to have a bit more questions with regard to this. Maybe August or July? Well, I don't know exactly when this is supposed to start up. I can come up with an answer later on. I didn't expect an answer tonight, but I believe that we should come up with an answer before the start of summer. Mr. Belenguet? I'd just like to say, Mr. Kio, that I agree with you. You're absolutely right. The board here, the town council approves the budget, the debt incurred by the town and the projects serviced by the debt, and the council approves the budget, basically. And it behooves council to take up, to make the necessary decisions that need to be made and that, let's hope, it will implement the needed cuts. Sir Leonard? Does someone travel along the roads to around to determine what kind, what kind of streetlights need to be replaced that are already burnt up? On Laurier Street, there are 10 burnt-out lights in between Town Hall and Heritage Road. There are four lighting posts in between Edwards and Saint Joseph. It looks like an abandoned street now. For the past two years, those posts are broken and we haven't done anything to repair them. And it's pitch black in that area. And apart from the broken lighting posts, there are some lights, streetlights that are burnt out. On Raymond Street, there's one burnt-out light at the corner of Sylvain and Heritage. Now, this streetlight has been burnt out for quite a while now. On Hudon Street, Chamberlain Street, there's a whole slew of burnt-out streetlights. Somebody needs to take action on this. Can't someone go by and take note of those burnt-out lights? Well, I believe, don't we have the night watchman or night supervisor goes to this? Well, we did so during the wintertime because we patrolled street sections for snow removal purposes, but only a section of the street is patrolled. It would require too much time to patrol 250 kilometers worth of street to patrol. Well, we should at least be able to patrol Laurier Street from stem to stern, really. We should look into this at least. Yes, we can look into the process involved in all of this and, Mr. Mayor? Now, we could start up this project as of July? Yes? Well, thank you. Yes, to allude to this, yes. The DT project will reduce the number, well, the LED, a project that will be implemented, the LED light will reduce the number of burnt-out lights and definitely will offset this, will solve this problem altogether. Let's just make sure that, as things stand right now, that the lights at those intersections, those lights that are burnt out be at least replaced. Mr. Lalonde can send us forward the list to us. Well, Mr. Mayor, I'm not requested here to go around all of the 250 kilometers of streets that we're maintaining, but there are many, many others that I haven't pointed out to you, I'm sure that do exist. Mr. Mayor, when we're aware of those lights that need to be replaced, they're on the list of lights to be replaced, but at present, we don't have anyone that goes around all of the street network throughout. Well, your bylaw enforcement officers, that's on duty at night. Can he not indicate, take a look, indicate those lights that are burnt out to us as he goes through his, as he conducts his patrol duties? Well, many years ago, that was my job with Cumberland Township. It took me about six hours to go around the municipality as a whole. Are you, do you want to volunteer your services? No, no, absolutely not. But let me tell you that at that time, this was done. Well, he can work until 9:00 PM now, until Sunday night because it gets dark later now. We'll take a look at this, Sir Leonard? Yes, that's it. Announcement called at 9:15 then.